Prayer for today. Father God, your word promises that you will guide me if I seek you. Show me how to order, order my, my time and arrange my schedule to accomplish your will. In Jesus' name, amen.
Good morning.
Today I will go over the financials that were approved on June 18th. I approved encumbrances, a travel encumbrance from the common police court to attend the Supreme Court of Ohio Judicial College Mental Health Crisis Intervention for probation officers, continuing education course. I also approved four vouchers. The first one for $572,668.05 from the Commissioner's Office to Infinity Construction Company for pay request number 20 of the courthouse expansion project. The second was for $629,339.25 from the Engineers' Office to Roniak Paving Incorporated for the asphalt resurfacing of legged and clay roads. The third one was for $46,640 from Maintenance to Geogga Mechanical Company Incorporated for a boiler replacement at the West Geogga Senior Center. And the last one was for $55,164 from the Sheriff to Motorola Solutions Incorporated for 800 megahertz trunk radio upgrades. That's all.
So that was item one and two?
Nope. For, in terms of the, the other items approved on June 23rd, for community and economic development, I approved and executed for a satisfaction release of mortgage for Opportunities Gateway LLC, Escape Designs LLC. As, as the mortgage from December 22nd, 2015, for a revolving loan, revolving loan fund in the amount of $250,000 has been satisfied. I also approved a satisfaction release of mortgage for Matthew T. Johnson and Megan M. Johnson as the mortgage from December 18th, 2008, for down payment assistance in the amount of $7,900 has been satisfied. And thirdly, a satisfaction release of mortgage for Matthew T. Johnson and Megan M. Johnson as the mortgage from November 5th, 2009, for housing rehabilitation for lever mediation in the amount of $24,063 has been satisfied. For Job and Family Services, I acknowledge the following new hire appointment. As the Executive Director of Job and Family Services, complied with the Board of Commissioners' recruitment and hiring procedures for Cameron Lutz, Social Services Worker One, replacement effective May 27th, 2025. And finally, for Maintenance, I approved hiring Jason Eming to the position of Maintenance Worker Number 1904 to be effective July 7th, 2025, at the rate of $19.86 per hour, Grade Six, Step Five, with a one-year probationary period. This offer of employment is contingent upon the successful completion of the required pre-employment conditions. That's all.
Thank you. Item number three, the Commissioner's Office requesting the board approve and execute the minute with the meeting of May 13th, 2025.
They include my red lines, Chris. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner.
Aye.
Yes.
Good morning.
Good morning. Adrian Gordon with the Commissioner's Office, covering today's financials, which include a then and now encumbrance from the Commissioners to Sedwick Claims Management Services Incorporated for the first contract payment from May and June 2025 that was not previously encumbered. There's also a travel encumbrance from the Engineers' Office to attend the TPC Boiler Operation Maintenance and Safety Training Course. And amongst the vouchers is $61,161 from the Clerk of Courts and Common Police Court to Courtview Justice Solutions for service and support of their courtroom management software. $135,121.88 from the Engineers' Office to Roniak Paving Incorporated for the asphalt resurfacing of Auburn Road Sections R through U. And $50,000 from Maintenance Office to the U.S. Postal Service, Guardian POC, for additional postage for the mailing machine.
So Sedwick Claim Management, did they handle our insurance claims? Is that how that works?
Um, yeah, they help manage the insurance claims and the BWC claims.
Okay.
Workers now, yeah. So unfortunately, it took a little while for us to get the, the contract through the whole process. And there was, uh, like about a month and a half at the beginning there that weren't covered under an encumberment, so.
Okay. Um, I'll make a motion to approve the financials.
Second.
Commissioner.
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So the adult probation is requesting the board, oh, I'm sorry.
Add your name and.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let me do that from Common Police Court Probation Department.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Sorry.
Getting a little nervous and just pushing a lot. So the adult probation is requesting the board's approval and execute a memorandum of understanding between the Geogga County Board of Commissioners, the Geogga County Court of Common Please, and the Geogga County Sheriff's Office, approving the submission of the Ohio Department of Rehabilitation and Correctional Bureau of Community Sanctions, BCS. Targeted Community Alternative to Prison, which is the TCAP grant, documentation the roles and the responsibilities of compliance requirements of the grant, pursuant to ORC 5149.38 for the period of July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2027, which will be the fiscal year 2627.
Can you talk a little about the grant and the program, how we're going to use it?
We're asking for the board to, um, execute and approve the memorandum, MOU, for the TCAP grant.
Right, yeah. Could you explain the grant? Like, talk, talk to the, so that I can understand what it is.
So it is, um, the purpose of the grant is to provide funds to the local communities to effectively suspend and provide treatment services and hold accountable low-level, non-violent offenders in the community, which keeps them out of prison. And we have different programs like Thinking for Change, Seeking Safety, Crime, and Sober Living. Soon to be, we're going to have GED testing also.
Okay, great. Any questions, Mr. Lawrence?
No.
Uh, so I'll make a motion to approve item number five.
Second.
Commissioner.
Aye.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Morning, Shane.
Good morning. Shane Azar with the Engineers' Office, here to present item number six. County Engineers' Office is requesting the board approve and execute change order number one, increasing the contract with Miller Builders LLC for the construction of the salt storage building to meet snow load requirements by the County Building Department in the amount of $14,864.06.
Uh, so can you talk about why this wasn't anticipated when?
So, yeah, we used a comparable design to our existing salt structure that's on-site. And then after it went through the building department, which ended up being after the plans were out to bid, they determined that the snow load requirements needed an extra trust member for the roof.
Okay.
So it was, we thought we had met the requirements and we found out otherwise.
Government getting in the way of government, huh?
Watching each other's back, that's all.
Okay, all right, I like that. I like that positive. I'll make a motion to approve item number six.
Second.
Commissioner.
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
In last winter, hey, you know, you know, thing collapsed, the dome collapsed in Concord.
Uh, salt dome collapsed? Interesting.
So it's interesting that you have to add.
Yep.
A trust.
We don't want that to happen.
No.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Good day.
I am Cindy Hay Coxwellman. I am the Program Director for the Geogga County Prosecutor Victim Witness Program. And we would like to apply for a grant that, um, it's provided by the Department of Justice that gives money to the state, so we would be applying to the Ohio Attorney General for these funds. Um, it's the same amount as last year. Uh, we were not given an opportunity to ask for more or else we would have. And then, um, Jim Flay's office, as the prosecutor, provides the balance of the fund for the program, funding for the program. Um, my program, uh, we are in charge of notifying victims of their Marcy's Law rights, which is the Ohio Constitutional Amendment that allows, um, for, you know, certain rights to be given to victims, the right to be kept informed of, the trial process, uh, court dates, um, you know, even down to little things like we have to let them know who the defense attorney is. And, you know, they may try to contact you and you don't have to talk to them, but, you know, they may try to talk, talk to you. Um, we just try to keep victims, um, as up-to-date on their cases and emotionally supportive as we can throughout the process. Um, so we are in charge of all of the common pleas level, all the felony level cases, and , um, as well as all the cases in the Geogga County General Court.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve item number seven.
Second.
Commissioner.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
I have this one. Ohio Guide Stone is requesting the board approve and execute a letter of support to the Ohio Developmental Disabilities Council in support of the grant application for Pathways to Progress, Community Outreach and Family Engagement for Individuals with Developmental Disabilities. This grant will support the expansion of their Beyond Limits program with outreach efforts and engagement within the communities and counties it serves, including Geogga County. So this would be a new grant? Is that correct?
I believe so.
Yeah, I think so. I'm not sure if it's a continuation or new.
Okay. Well, I mean, it says it expansion of the program, so that seems like, um, this would be money beyond what we've gotten in the past. And so then my question is just that if this grant goes away, then what happens to this position that's being created?
I can't speak.
We don't know anything about that.
I thought she, Kim Brown would be here this morning.
Is she coming later or? We don't know.
We don't know.
We don't know.
And is this time sensitive to?
No, I think we'll come to next session if we need to.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just, I, listen, I'm all about clawing as much money for Geogga County from the state and the feds as possible, but my only concern is if we create a position, we create a program, what happens if that funding goes away? What's the plan?
Sure.
Okay, I'll, I'll reach out to her and let her know the questions and how to sign that she can come to next session.
Okay. Or just, I mean, that's, that's my only question, so if she just wants to email a response, that would be okay too. So I'll make a motion to, uh, table item number eight.
Second.
Commissioner.
Aye.
Yes.
Morning.
Good morning.
So that's this? All right.
Yeah. I'm actually, if I may, I'm going to hand out some updates here.
Oh, new papers.
Well, they're just saying what I just added, the engineering costs, so you get to see the entire project, as opposed to. Okay. Um, this is item number nine on the agenda, and it is regarding the masonry repairs at the Annex Building, specifically 215 and 219 Main Street on the backside. Um, we had a, top of the parapet was leaning, uh, it was bulging out, and we also need to do some, uh, overall repair work, um, to the wall, the rear wall. So just to give you a background on this, when we originally looked at this job, uh, we estimated it to be around $100,000. The engineering costs were going to be 17.5, and the total project cost was $117,500. So that was before we had the engineering firm onboard. Uh, once we got the engineering firm onboard, they went out and did an assessment, and on May 2nd, they provided us a preliminary report, and it included, uh, not only the work that we had asked for, which was the parapet repair, um, and, um, the, um, the updating, the tuck pointing of the masonry wall, but they had identified that the roof above that, and if you look at the two pictures that I, I, um, passed out, the first one, which was page five of the, uh, of the actual, um, the actual proposal, shows the roof. And the roof is in very poor repair and is probably contributing to the deterioration of the parapet wall as well as the masonry wall.
Is it leaking or anything?
It had been leaking.
Yeah. I mean, it looks terrible.
Yeah, I think they patched it, and it's, uh, probably, from what I understand, there was still evidence of moisture and, uh, leaking on the inside.
Okay.
So with that, they highly recommended that if we're going to repair the parapet wall and the masonry wall, we really need to do the roof first, otherwise we're, uh, not really solving the root cause of the entire problem. So with that, the May 2nd, uh, report, uh, suggested that we, um, uh, we also replace the roof, uh, for that portion of the building. And that was going to be an additional $59,500. Uh, the estimate to do the masonry repair and tuck pointing was $73,000. And that included, we asked them to, to paint and clean the fire escape too. That fire escape goes actually from the second floor of the Opera House over, over this rooftop. You can see it in the one picture, you can see the fire escape there, and then down, down onto the ground. And it's in, um, it's in really rusted condition, so they had recommended painting that and cleaning it. Um, after a conversation with them, uh, we had asked, if you look at the third page that I sent, which is the second picture, that's the back of the wall, and there's a lot of, over the years, there's been a lot of patchwork done to that wall. And they've put in concrete instead of brick. Yeah, and it looks, it looks pretty, um, pretty bad. Um, so they also recommended, uh, doing some work to take out all of the concrete block that is, or concrete squares that are there. And to really, um, when they redid the brickwork, when they put in the new windows, they just put a joint straight down, and you really should tooth it in, so.
Yeah.
And, and, and so, uh, they actually suggested not only replacing the concrete, but also repairing the tooth ins there. They're also going to replace the lintels, uh, with galvanized, because right now they're rusting as well too, the ones at the top of the window. Um, they were going to take them out and clean them, but then we had suggested turning that to galvanized, that way we don't have to have that rusting problem going forward.
I feel like you should have just circled everything on this picture. I'm like, what's going on over here? This is leaning.
Well, actually, the circles are from a previous repair that was done. This is an old photo.
Okay.
But it was the best one that we had with, uh, with the cars and so forth. Uh, so with that, we asked them for a revised quote, and on May 29th, they sent us a revised close, which included, um, uh, really redoing the brickwork there so that it takes out all the concrete and, uh, toots in the joints and so forth and so on. Um, and also to, um, and that alone was going to increase it $52,000. So, uh, in addition to that, they looked at the fire escape closer, and we cannot upgrade it because if we do, it, it has to be completely redone up to code. But what they can do, the grate is rusting, so replace the grates so that when you walk on it, it's more safer.
Yeah.
Uh, so that added a, an additional about $15,000 to the, um, uh, to the roof work, uh, if we're going to replace the grating on the fire escape. So that brought the total project to $200,000 for construction. Now, I added the engineering fees in there because the roof engineering fee, to do the roof is an additional $12,000, and to do the additional, um, uh, redesign of the brickwork, that was an additional $5,000. So the, um, engineering fee would go from 17.5 to 34.5, um, which makes the total project cost, if we chose option one, uh, and actually went with the, uh, the full design, would be 234.5.
So detailed question, uh, with the galvanized angler over the windows.
Uh-huh.
We're going to make sure they're splashing and weeples in there?
Yes. Yes, we added that to the, um, to the, um, actual final design to ensure that they added this.
And you were going to do the masonry work?
I could do, from anywhere between midnight and 4:00 in the morning.
Oh, yeah, that's fine. They can work on your schedule.
Yeah.
So the purpose of, of, of us here today is to really give you those two options. We can choose the, uh, the 162 option, or we can choose the 234.5 option, um, which would, uh, be the full scope. And, uh, really to get your approval on the direction, so that, um, the next step would be then we'd have to do a change order for the engineering, for the additional work, which I did not do yet because I wanted to see if we got approval for the larger project. And, uh, if so, then we would move forward with the final design.
I don't know what you're.
My thoughts are leaning towards the 234.5.
I, I mean, I don't like spending more money, but it, it seems like these upgrades are essential. And if we do, I mean, I don't want more past jobs, and then in 10 years, we're coming to another, or somebody's coming to another Commissioner Board, right, asking for more expensive repairs.
Right.
It seems like, um, we should think about the long term and probably make this investment now.
I mean, with the 234, we're getting so much.
Yeah.
I mean, we're getting the roof, we're getting that parapet, uh, the leaning, uh, tower.
Yeah.
Up there, that's getting torn down.
Yeah.
And then redone. The stairs are getting repainted, upgraded.
Yeah.
So, uh, even that back wall, like Chuck was saying, stating, it's just, every time we look at this, it's like, okay, well, this could affect this and this could affect this.
Yeah.
A roof job should be a roof job, and tuck pointing should be tuck pointing, but it all ties in with one another, especially on this one. And that's why we've been going the extra step and everything. So Chuck has really been working with the engineer, getting out there and pulling me in the meetings and, and going through it and, uh, trying to really keep me on track on this all with everything else going on, so.
No, I mean, when you look at these pictures and you can see.
Yes.
That it's structurally unstable, that is a huge deal. I mean, I remember, like, I have an engineering degree myself, and they told us, like, if you ever see a bridge leaning, get off the bridge, you know? Like, if you can start to see that destruction, like, you are, you're in bad shape. So I kind of feel like we're in that, that bad shape, that we really need to be making certain investments.
And with this, since it's way back when they, when they replaced the windows, you know, the, uh, the older windows had the steel in it.
Yeah.
So we go the cheap way, and we leave the steel and the brick and everything, and then that rust and everything, and that's what's causing a lot of these problems here.
Yeah.
So at one time, yeah, going the cheap way of just putting it in instead, instead of tearing it all out and redoing it, all right, now this is where we're at, and we're trying to go the, the correct way, so.
No, I mean, I, and I appreciate the idea of saving money, certainly, if I, it feels like this is a time we need to make that investment. I, and I really appreciate your presentation, Chuck. You spent a lot of time on this, it's very detailed, um, excellent part.
Thank you.
I make, I make a motion to go over the 234.5 and proceed with this project.
I'll second that.
Commissioner.
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. You all have a good day.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. Nick Horace, Water Resources. First item on the agenda is requesting, uh, permission to grant for, to request, uh, grant permission to advertise for bids for our fuel and fuel tank provider for the Department of Fuel Systems. Uh, it's, in the past, our provider, uh, has been willing to stay under state bid, and as this year said, it's not going to be able to happen with fuel volatility, so we're going to put it out to bid. It's, uh, pretty similar to what we've done, the department has done in the past. So we'll post it on, in the paper and on the website, and hoping for bids.
I'll make a motion to approve item number 10.
Second.
Commissioner.
Aye.
Yes.
Item 11 on the agenda, a little bit different, uh, requesting the board acknowledge, receive and accept the proposed updates to the Geogga County Facility Planning Area Boundaries as part of the NOACA's five-year update process. It's following up with the Clean Water 2020 Act and the Ohio EPA requirement, um, every five years, each of the five of the counties in the MPO need to update their facility planning areas. Uh, we went and took the document that was originally started in the 90s, had some areas that were generalizations where they expected growth, uh, things of sewed, not sewed, maybe sewed, and future planning 20 years down the road. When we did the, uh, did the update with NOACA, when they identified it almost 18 months ago, we pulled up and we just started going through every account that we have on the system. Um, it was a, a good exercise for the department. We found some accounts that weren't being billed, we found some accounts that might have been billed, we just cleaned up the entire, um, system. We have also during this have taken out the future planning, the 20 years and beyond. We've taken that off of our system as our, uh, our water, our wastewater treatment plants have so much capacity and we don't see the growth right now. I don't see, because of the rural nature, if we were more municipal, the villages, you know, we might see that the expansion like Middlefield is seeing with the growth in the house.
Right.
We don't have that so much in the Geogga County FPA. Part of the process, we also worked with the other DMAs that are within the Geogga County boundaries, uh, City of Leaning, City of Aurora, Sugarland Falls, Middlefield, Burton, Chardon, um, worked with all of them to ensure our boundaries matched, you know, to ensure that what we, as what, as Geogga County was processing, were, you know, it wasn't a combination of confusion. So, um, a lot of hard work, a lot of efforts, um, a lot of coordination.
How long did this process take, Nick?
Well, when it was identified for us, we focused our beginnings in Bainbridge, uh, our largest area. So we started back in, you know, I'm going to say 18 months ago, with Bainbridge.
Yeah.
Uh, slowly, uh, it kicked off, uh, fully with NOACA, um, first of this year. So a six-month process. Usually, this is being approved, um, at the end, almost in the last session, board meeting of NOACA. You'll, the board will see this in September.
Okay.
So it was, um, uh, in NOACA's schedule, it was actually brought up at the Water Quality Subcommittee, uh, it's past Friday. So the Water Quality Subcommittee has reviewed it and, and recommended it to be moved to the board for approval and acceptance, and then it goes to the EPA for final approval and adoption, so.
Okay. So as far as the process goes, you came up with this, and then you give it to NOACA, is that, I mean, how much input does NOACA have?
Uh, they're going to reach out to us and, you know, for the realistic, right? So, um, they can look at it, it's a planning document.
But at this point, there's, like, NOACA hasn't had their fingerprints on it?
We've worked together, they've actually done the GIS mapping, uh, to update theirs, uh, in concert with, they're doing a review, and they're working with the other DMAs like with, uh, Aurora.
Right, right.
You know, it's not our DMA, so there's some coordination back and forth saying, is this Geogga County's? Should this be Aurora's? So in that involvement, NOACA did more involvement with the other primary DMAs within the area.
Yeah.
But basically, they took our spreadsheets, um, for our areas, and that's what's being adopted.
Okay.
It's not them saying, do this.
Nope. I mean, that's, that's what I was getting at, is just seeing that you agree with this plan.
I do.
Yeah.
We, basically, everything that is in here came from our department, our audit, and the way that we've gone through it. We're actually going to be presenting our methodology that we use, Geogga County, in the, uh, the roundtable that NOACA is doing tomorrow. It's a webinar.
Yeah.
So I'll be, we'll be presenting how we did our process.
Okay, great.
Because NOACA was impressed with our data, data management. You know, we took it down to each individual parcel where, and again, being a young department now, it was a good exercise for us to not only update our account information, um, but to ensure the document that is available to the public is realistic.
Yeah.
Right? It's not pie in the sky, it's, this is, we went down anywhere there's a gravity sewer, if there's a parcel in front of it, it's now maybe sewed if it wasn't connected.
Yeah.
It wasn't a guess, you know?
Factual information.
It's, it's, we asked engineers like to work, right? We want it to be facts, so.
I can weigh.
Right, so.
That's what I liked.
So, so this is again, just a, uh, it's not, there's no monetary, uh, value put on this, there's no money being expended, it's a planning document. In normal process, if this was to be expanded, say a house outside of this, uh, it's not on a gravity, it wants to extend, process is totally different, it requires township, we want township or affected jurisdiction buy-in, um, and then we bring it to the Commissioners for fully, of expanding that facility plan. This is just making what currently is out there.
Yeah.
Accurate.
Yeah, so there's really, there's no controversy.
No controversy.
Just, it's what it is.
Don't.
All right, well, that was a. All right, well, that was a great description. I'll be honest, I read through this, and I'm like, I don't, I don't really understand what's going on. I don't know if it was the heat or what, but that was helpful to hear you talk about it.
There's a lot of information, and again, it's, it's a planning document. It's a guide document, maybe a economic growth. If you do, we're looking 20 years, and the business was looking to come in, they're going to say, hey, is there sewer available?
Right.
You know, we're, we'll be developing something similar to this with our water systems, just to be able to show where our water facilities are too, on the heels of this one. It's not a requirement, but we will be doing that with our water, just to make it available to any industry or somebody looking to say, hey, where is water right now?
That's helpful. All right, I'll make a motion to approve item number 11.
Second?
Commissioner Brady? I have, Commissioner DeBor.
Yes.
All right, and then item 12 on the agenda is just following along with other departments and helping Ms. Blair clean out the drawer on some old performance bonds that are no longer required to be held. So requesting to release the bid performance bonds for the following projects, including SET Incorporated for the Bainbridge Sewer Main Realignment Project, Viking Payment LLC for the water tower painting improvements, and for Woodward, Wordford Excavating for the Bainbridge Waterline Extension Loop Project.
I'm Ms. Toker.
Second?
Commissioner Brady? I have, Commissioner DeBor.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Here today with Mara McLean. She is our Account Executive from Sedgwick to discuss the group retrospective rating program and the 2026 plan agreement.
Additional handout?
And you are?
Oh, and I am Kathy Hostler, and I work for the Jogga County Commissioners.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Good morning, Mara McLean, Sedgwick TPA. Here to discuss Jogga County's workers' compensation program. The handout that I just gave you folks, the very first page, I'd like to highlight a few things. Sedgwick TPA is the largest TPA in Ohio. We administer workers' compensation programs, in particular, group rating, group retro, individual retro, and we even have some self-insured clients here in the state of Ohio. The County Commissioners Association of Ohio partners with Sedgwick TPA to offer the members of the county commissioners here in Ohio the group retro program or the group rating program. There's about 80 counties here in Ohio that utilize Sedgwick TPA, and you can see they're all marked with an asterisk. Those are Sedgwick TPA clients. And in the lower right-hand corner, you'll see group rating. There's about seven here in the state of Ohio that get group rating with us. Group rating is a upfront discount program off of your workers' comp premium that you pay to the Ohio Bureau of Workers' Comp. Group retro, which is what Jogga is in, is a rebate program. It's a performance-based program based on the claims incurred that year versus the premiums paid to the bureau for that year. And the goal of the group retro program is to have as few claims as possible to pay the bureau this premium, but to keep your claims down so that you get rebated back some of that premium. That's the goal. Individual retro, there's a handful of those folks here in Ohio, experience rated, meaning they're not in any type of group program. And then lastly, self-insured. Here in Ohio, you're either self-insured, you're kind of like your own little mini Bureau of Workers' Comp, or you're part of the state fund, which is what you folks are. And in the state fund, imagine a three-legged stool with workers' comp. You've got the Bureau of Workers' Comp, you pay your insurance premium to them. The second leg of the stool is the MCO, the Managed Care Organization. They're the neutral medical managers of all your workers' comp claims. They make sure that your folks get medically taken care of and back to work. And then the third leg of the stool is the TPA. They're party administrators. Pardon?
Your stool's on its side.
Yeah, yes. Three-legged stool.
Yep.
It's, it's the only way that I can, I can keep it straight, yeah. So the TPA, we are the employer advocate. You pay us an annual administrative fee, and we help mitigate claims costs, helping the employer. And we also help you get into some type of group program to either get an upfront discount off your premiums, or get a backend rebate in group retro. Okay? So going to the second page, let's get into the weeds a little bit more. Here in Ohio, the very top chart there on, on the second page is your EMR history for the past five years. EMR stands for Experience Modification Rate. Folks, it's a very, very important number. The lower the number below 1.00, the better. When you are above 1.00, that's bad news. That means you're penalty rated, your EMR is penalty rated. When you're below 1.00, like Jogga County is, over on the left, you'll see right now for the 2025 rate year, your EMR is .67. That is phenomenal. That is excellent.
What was going on in '21?
Yeah, it was a bad year. You know, sometimes if you just have one really bad claim, those claims stay on your experience for four years. You're carrying that. And, you know, what we want is we want the claims that are fixed and not non-fixed claims, because the fixed claims don't add to your reserve. But in '20, I can, I can remember some of the claims back then. They can stay on if people are going back to the doctor. Uh-oh, now they need surgery. That adds to the reserve. And so your reserve keeps growing, and yeah, I mean, I, well, I've been doing workers' comp for the commissioners for, you know, 20 years. And we were in that group rating, the group rating that you talked about, and they weren't happy with us because we were penalty rated. And so in 2010 is when we got into group retrospective. It was the inception of the program, and it was, it was a lifesaver, because we got in with other, we were right there at the ground level, and we couldn't, it was amazing. I mean, anytime you're with other counties, if you have a bad year, okay, you know, it kind of makes up for the counties that are having a good year. And as we've gone on for the last 15 years, I, I, we have never been assessed anything through this whole program. It's, it's really kind of been a cool journey, honestly, to go through this with all the counties and the work that Sedgwick puts into it. Tony Shirok, Lance Watkins have, they had many sleepless nights over this program of how it was going to work out, because people were, were putting their trust in him. And I think that with the county, you know, again, you have that one really bad claim, and we've had a lot of them. We've had a fatality situation. We've had claims that lasted for four years and five years until we actually get them off. So that's why.
Yes. The EMR all boils down to your claims incurred. Did you come in under budget? What was your budget for claims that rating year versus what was your, the, the actual incurred, incurred claims versus your budget? So in Mara language, you want to have fewer claims dollars than what the bureau expected you to have. For example, for '25, your budget for claims for the '25 rate year was $388,000. You folks only came in at $111,000. So you came in way under budget. That's why your EMR is .67. It's a very complex calculation on how they come up with that EMR, but the bottom line is claims incurred versus what was your budget. So .67, that's phenomenal. You're only paying 67% of the base rates. The base rates here in Ohio, every single manual class code has a base rate. You folks obviously have the county code, and your base rate is like 93 cents per $100 a payroll. So you're only paying 67% of that 93 cents. That's phenomenal. If you're paying, if your EMR is 1.50, that's bad news. You're paying 150% of that 93 cent base rate. Okay? So that's EMR.
And another thing about this program, we all pay our own premiums based on that EMR.
Yes.
So every, all the 59 counties that are in this are paying their own premiums. But then the program itself, they're doing a three-year evaluation. So for 2024 claims, you get a 12-month evaluation at the end of 2025.
Correct.
And then you get a second evaluation at the end of '26, a second, a third evaluation, and final evaluation at the end of '27. And they're, they're looking at the whole pool.
Yes, everybody.
And you get rebates based on that. So we're always, we do quarterly meetings and teams meetings, and Tony is always explaining all of this, and we are always seeing where we are in the, in the program. So that's really the basis for group retrospective, would you say?
Correct.
Yeah.
It's a performance-based program of the whole group. The goal of the group is to keep your claims down compared to your premiums paid to the bureau. In Mara language, you paid the premium to the bureau, and then the group retro rebates, if everybody overpays the bureau all this, this premium, and you, everybody kept the claims down, the bureau doesn't use this money, they rebate it back to you. And what Kathy was referring to was these rebates come over, trickle back over a three-year period. For example, just in April of '25, a few months ago, you got a rebate back from the '21 rate year, the '22 rate year, and the '23 rate year. The bureau does these three evaluations to figure out how much money should we give back to each county in the group? Or heaven forbid, should there be an assessment? The assessment, don't let it scare you, is, and you folks haven't had one, is when everybody has more claims in the group than you all paid the bureau in premium. So you have to make up that difference. It's called an assessment.
So how does it work if you're self-insured?
Oh, totally different animal, totally different animal. It's like being your own little special bureau workers' compensation.
Yeah.
You do have to put in applications, you have to meet like a credit score, there's all kinds of...
Because it seems like we're overpaying, and then we get a refund.
That's group retro. Yes.
I mean, I'd rather just not overpay.
I know.
Yeah, well, in, in years, 2018 and 2019, the reason we got no refunds back is because they did the billion-dollar back deals, if you remember. So they, the state actually reimbursed us totally for what we paid out in 2018 and 2019, so you can't get a rebate on, they gave us everything back. There was no rebate. But I, yeah.
Yeah. Self-insurance is a totally different animal. I'd be happy to run a study and just for giggles to do a comparison.
Yeah, I'd be interested.
Yeah, just to see what it's like.
Because, I mean, it seems like you're rising or falling with the group, right? And then, so how do you do screen counties, or if they want to be in it, they're in?
We look at your losses, we look at your EMRs. Oh, yeah, we've got criteria.
Because if you're like a bad boy, you shouldn't be in the group, right?
Exactly.
You have to follow criteria. You have to have a safety committee. You, you have to follow criteria, do transitional work so that everybody is on the same page. And of course, here in the county, the reason, one of the reasons that, that EMR is where it is, is because all of the people in this county, all of the elected officials, directors and supervisors, do an excellent job in managing their workers' comp. I mean, we do trainings, they participate, we do, we have the, the program where we're looking at claims as well as payroll, not just payroll. It's a payback program. And so we have a lot of interest from, from all of our, our people and our employees, too. I think we do a decent job of talking about safety. I know a lot of the departments are talking about, you know, they're having their staff meetings and things.
Do we participate in a local safety council?
Yes, we do.
Okay, so that's how we could get a 3% discount.
Yep, I do attend that. It's once a month, and yeah, they raised it from 2% to 3%. So it's, that's a really good program as well. The more information we have, you know, the safety committee goes out after we have our meetings and dispenses the materials that we talk about. And we have a very active and very astute county that cares about safety and does the right things. But like I said, one really bad claim...
Yeah, and it could make your EMR go right up.
And that's what scares me about self-insured, because we've had some really bad claims. So, yeah.
Agreed. So the rest of this chart on, on the second page goes into the rebates historically that you've received. Down at the bottom, I highlighted, lower right-hand corner, 1.5 million are the total group retro rebates that Jogga County has received since participation back in the 2010 rating year. And one thing, I'm sure you'll notice here on the left-hand side, gee, Mara, why have some of the rebates gone down over the years? You know, back in the day, 176,000, all the way down to, say, 97,000. There's a few things. And you'll notice in the, in the center column, your premium history. Jogga's premiums have actually gone down over the years. That's good. That's a factor of many things. There's, of course, reduced claims, but then also the bureau has reduced base rates, okay? But as far as the group retro rebates, why they've gone down? In simplest terms, group retro, and it's not, it's not us, and it's not you folks, it's the bureau. Group retro has changed over, since 2010. They have brought down base rates, they have brought down expected loss rates and limited loss ratios, which are very funny actuarial numbers that are used to come up with your budget, okay? Those have come down. They've also applied losses, they've changed the loss development factors with group retro. Those are the factors that are used to figure out how much money you should get back as a rebate. They've, like I've, I've mentioned before, the base rates have come down, and then, of course, the new reserving system. The reserves here in Ohio are set by the bureau. They used to use the MIRA, M-I-R-A, reserving system. Then they changed it to the ACE's reserving system, which makes the reserves higher. The reserves are kitties of money set aside for future expected costs in the claim. The bureau sets them, we don't, okay? So that's why you'll notice over the years that the rebates have gone down. So, point being, bottom right-hand corner, 1.5 million is the total that you've received over the past, gosh, 15 years. The last page, folks, goes into 2026. Group retro is an annual program where you have to renew every year. And as your TPA for the 2026 rate year, we are projecting Jogga County to be at a .65 EMR, upper right-hand corner. That's phenomenal. It's lower than where you're at now. Then the premiums are estimated at about 235,000. This center box right here, you'll see the estimated refund range with the graph, the charts, and you'll see my scribble down here at the bottom. Target refund for '26 is approximately 20%. So our group retro target for '26 is a 20% rebate. It could be more, it could be as high as 62.85, but we are very conservative, we're realistic. We go right at about a 20% rebate for target. The max assessment over here to the right is 5%. I'm very excited to say that the bureau brought the assessment percentages down. They used to be 20, 25, 30%. 5% is the max assessment.
So 5% of what?
5% of your premium of the 235.
So that was one of my questions, is like, what's the, what's the worst?
Yep, the worst case, 235, pay the 235. There, there's no escaping paying the premium. But then an additional 11,777 is worst case.
Oh, I see that now.
Yep.
But honestly, you probably even wouldn't have to pull money out of your pocket, because you're always getting those rebates from the previous year. So even if this one, if it wasn't so good that year, they're not, they're going to just take it out of the following evaluation. So I think, I think that's how it's been for most counties. I don't know that people have really had to pull something out of their pockets.
Correct, yeah. Because you might get a negative for the one year, but then get money back for the other two. So the other two kind of take out the, the assessment. So the group retro rebate, targeting at about 47,000, max assessment at 5%. The deadline to renew is July 25th. And Kathy has all the appropriate paperwork.
Thanks.
And that is a crash course in workers' comp group retro. Are there any questions?
I think I got them aligned.
Does the BWC give guidance or classes to, you know, settings like this? So we can lower our, our rates and make it safer than what it is already safe now?
You folks are doing a phenomenal job, bar none, hands down. Kathy and Megan are managing the claims very well. You folks are very safety-oriented. Yes, the bureau does offer free courses, even online. They even do webinars and in-person training. training. To do that, even Sedgwick, TPA does, and Sedgwick MCO offers training as well. I, simply put, I don't know if you could get any better than what you folks are doing right now with a point six-five EMR projected for next year.
And, you know, we've put all of that information out, you know, as far as, especially with, like our maintenance department, I know water resources, the engineers, they do an awful lot of training, um, the Bureau, e- even in Corsa University, there's a lot of safety in that training as well, so people are aware, I hope, and I believe, and I think that's really one of the reasons why we've seen fewer claims. People getting, um, you know, supervisors, directors, getting their employees back to work, because as soon as you are out of work over that eight days, it becomes a lost time claim. And that increases your reserve and it, it creates a lot of other issues in the workplace. And we have seen definitely a decrease in, in all of that, so. But next year, you know, you just never know, accidents happen, that's why we have this insurance, and it could be a monster, but rest assured, we will handle it as best that we can. But some of them are just really, really complicated claims. So, right now, we're just like escaping a little bit, so.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Okay?
Thanks for your presentation.
Thank you.
Slide 14, January first, twenty twenty-six through December 31st, twenty twenty-six.
Oh, I was wondering.
To exceed about eleven-five.
Yeah, and that eleven-five, oh, do you want me not to say anything about?
No, I just, not to exceed.
Yeah, that's just for the administrative fees for CCAO, they really haven't hit eleven-five to my knowledge, but, um, our assistant prosecutor wanted something in there, and that's just based on claims for that year. So, okay, so.
So how, how are we billed then?
We pay CC, is Adrian here? No, I believe he just pays CCAO. It's kind of interesting because they're paying them.
Based on what? Because you're saying you don't know what it's going to be?
Well, it's a, it can't exceed eleven thousand, five hundred dollars.
I, I understand that, but how, how would we, how would we know what we're going to be billed?
You can't, because it's based on the claim cost.
Okay, so that's, that's the answer. So it's based on how many claims and that complexity, is it like an hourly rate, is...
No, it's just kind of a flat rate.
I think it's flat, but it's, the claims, correct, the claims impact the amount to CCAO, yes.
That's like the type of claim.
Yeah, it's like if it's a lost time claim and things of that nature, it's based on the claims.
Where does it factor in? How many employees does this county have versus another county?
I'd have to look into that.
I mean, probably just the amount of claims, right?
Right.
If someone has more employees or has more claims.
And, and we cover everyone, you know, from the minute an employee, employee becomes, comes first day, they get in an accident, and day two, they're covered under workers' comp immediately. So we have, and that's our seasonals, part-time, everyone that is employed here at the.
So don't hurt yourself when you're doing that.
You missed every work.
I'll be careful.
I mean, I would like to see though, what it, what this would look like if we did self-insure for my.
Sure, I can run a study.
General information.
Absolutely. In my opinion, I think you'd be still better off to stay in group retro, but I'd be happy to crunch the numbers so you can do side-by-side.
Did you want me to read fourteen?
The Commissioner's Office has been discussing the Board, approved and authorized, the President of the Board to execute the Geogga County County Commissioners Association of Ohio Workers' Compensation Group Retro Effective Rating Plan Agreement with the CCAO Service Corporation for the period January first, twenty twenty-six through December 31st, twenty twenty-six, and amount now to exceed eleven thousand, five hundred dollars. And further execute, you have your workers' compensation employer statement for group retrospective rating program and will that count?
So when do we have to make this decision? It doesn't start till next year?
Oh no, we have to make the decision like now, we have to get it into the Bureau, um, by the twenty-fifth, that we have to get it to.
Of this month, like tomorrow?
Yeah, like, no, no, July, July, I'm sorry.
I was like, okay.
Yeah, so, uh, we have to get it, we send it to them at the beginning of July to CCAO.
Okay, so do I have time to look at what self-insuring would look like before?
Absolutely.
Okay, so then I'm going to move to table item on fourteen.
Okay.
Mr. Murphy?
Hey.
Commissioner.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Wendy Anderson, who is the President of the Geogga County Agricultural Society, also known as the Great Geogga County Senior Fair Board. Keith Chapman, our Vice President, is back here as well, and you are getting information from Meg Noah, our illustrious secretary of the fair, and she's going to speak about a lot of what we've been doing, which has been very busy.
All right, I'm giving you guys all of the details. We have a calendar for our newest. Okay. Good morning. Um, so I handed out your OFMA passes for the commissioners, that'll get you to any Ohio fair, including the Ohio State Fair. I did not bring you a list of fairs, but they are on the ohiofares.org if you want to look, and I can also drop off the list if you need it.
It's in the book.
Oh, you're right.
Former Ford should like.
You're right, I forgot. Um.
You got one, but.
And there it started.
Lots of pages on this thing.
But the number one question is, what are the flavors at the, uh, Mepshick?
Yeah, we have the secret and it's right at the fair.
Reveal on social.
Exactly, yeah, we can't reveal yet, so.
He doesn't know yet.
I don't know if you were following our Facebook recently, but we did have the flash sale that happened weekend, ended to, or yet sort of last night. Uh, so it was pretty, pretty successful. Um, we sold about seven, I don't know, I didn't get the final numbers, but around seven thousand pre-sale tickets, so we're excited. Good turnout.
Are you going to do the sale over the fourth, too, or?
No.
That's it, okay.
That was it. We moved it because it's, so we go on New Day Cleveland, um, to promote the flash sale and doing it right at the holiday weekend is very difficult to get on TV. So we moved it this year hoping we would get, you know, we wouldn't confuse too many people, but we'll see.
I feel like I'm already confused. I thought there were two opportunities.
I'm sorry.
No, that's all right.
So, um, I mean, we might be able to ask the Board if, you know, people are really upset with us, but, um, but yeah, so that was great, but we still have advanced sale tickets on sale, um, eight dollars to get in, um, until, up until like the day of the fair, and then we have the five for thirty-five that you can get at local banks or at the fairgrounds or online.
Is it thirty-five or forty-five?
Forty-five is membership.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, and then you'll see in your packet, a little invitation to the ribbon cutting. Um, we know it's not during the week, so we're hoping maybe one or two of the commissioners can come, or all of you, but we're hoping you'll come help us cut the ribbon once the buildings go up, which, there is, the site work is pretty much done, they've, were the footers for the new poultry barn, the, yesterday I think they did those, and then the sale barn's all ready to go, it's supposed to arrive on July first, so.
Is the, is the construction slab with a four footer, or is there a, and then block, or it's all?
Uh, no, well, I don't know.
It's going to be, it's a quarter, then it's going to be three-quarter block, four, three-quarter, and then the metal structure.
Okay, thanks.
And so, and then the poultry barn is set to arrive on July seventh. So then we have lots of work to do once we get the buildings up and ready for the fair, so, um, we're busy on that one. And then I gave you guys a farebook, so if you want to enter, entry deadline is August sixth, so you can all get blue ribbons if you would like. Um, and then I gave you a list of our grounds projects, um, I'm not going to go over every single one because it would take a long time, but some highlights are our Cook Street restroom renovation, which I, I know I've spoken in the past about how important it is for the Fair Board to renovate all the restrooms on the grounds. We have five facilities and they all look like they're from a very long time ago, um, it's probably just a point that we've, we've made the last five years to renovate all the restroom facilities. So, um, we did the family restroom at Cook Street last year to allow for the, um, access for like the ADA wheelchair accessibility to go in, they can shower, they can, you know, if there's an adult that needs extra assistance, we have room now for them to have a restroom facility where we didn't before. And now the Cook Street men's and women's side is both being renovated, so that's almost done, we're just finishing up the partitions on the women's side.
Hopefully they're a little bigger than they.
They are. Probably bigger than a ten-year-old can fit. Um, so our next, um, goal is the arena restroom renovation, so we're starting to look at that for next year, depending on how we do it fairtime, so. But, uh, and then another highlight is, I mean, we had several insurance claims when the storm came through, we had to do the roof, the racehorse barn, um, we had to fix a couple of other items. Lightning struck the office again, so we had to, um, we decided to move away from a server that seems to get taken out every time lightning strikes our office to a cloud system. Um, so we worked on that for several weeks. Um, and then we, um, also, one of the things that we're almost finished with is, uh, the lighting on the fairgrounds, changing everything over to LED to save money on electricity. So we finished the grants, or the grandstand lighting was part of the insurance claim and part of our, you know, hope for the future to get the grandstand lights fixed underneath. And so we did that, and then we also finished the parking lot. And we topped off three poles that were so high, we needed to bring in a special bucket, or I don't even know what the kind of truck was, to reach those lights, so we topped them off so that they're lower, so our guys can reach them now. And everything's LED in the parking lots now. Um, so we're pretty much done with that project. Um, we did remodel the sheriff's building when you first drive into the fair, the sheriff's building that's right by the digital sign, we redid that for them because it was pretty bad, the floor was like caving in and the door had a gap like a foot tall, so. And then, um, just the regular maintenance that we do around the fairgrounds with like tree removal, bush removal, we did dredge the pond in the back, the upper pond, and that had filled, a lot of silt had gone into it from the, um, from the Berkshire School construction, so we dredged that and then we used the clay from that pond to build the pad for the poultry barn and the sale barn, so it was good timing to get both those projects completed.
Nice.
Um, and that, unless you have any questions about grounds projects, I know it's very exciting, but.
I'm excited about the bathrooms.
I feel like those are a long time coming, right?
Well, how deep is the, the water going to be with the dredging of that?
Um, it's pretty deep now, I mean, I would say.
I was going to say it's.
Yeah.
I was shocked, because.
Yeah, it's pretty deep.
I wanted to see where you guys were at on the building I saw, and it was all dredged out and on the beach, and I was like, wow, that looks totally different.
Is the main purpose for that pond is to, during the racetrack and the horses and the cars and that, is to just water down the field so it contains the dust?
We water down the whole entire fairgrounds.
That's right.
Right, that's what that, um, serves as, it's not the fishing.
Right.
That's nice, though, and the dog diving, or that, I like that too.
Um, and then I didn't bring a whole lot for you about the multipurpose building, but I know Chris Dwork and I have spoken about the multipurpose building project that we're working on. There's the budget and the plans. Um, we did change the location of the building to be where the existing extension office sits, just because of the access to the road and utilities being right there, and we were told that the extension office was, um, not in good repair, I guess. So we had that discussion, I think with Commissioner Spedlerie a while ago, um, but right now, the budget sits at five million for the new project, so we're working on figuring out if that's something we want to move forward with, if we want to change how we see this moving forward. Obviously, your input is greatly appreciated and, you know, anything you could do to help us.
What's your timeline on that?
So we have a grant from the state, we have two grants actually, and one of them is coming, we extended it to twenty-six.
Okay.
But we really need to figure out if we're going to move forward.
What's the extent of that work, how, what's the size of that grant?
Five hundred thousand.
Okay.
And then we have another grant for two hundred and fifty thousand, but I don't have the deadline on that grant, I don't know if there is one.
Yeah, because I saw some, some county had in their state budget, right?
Right.
A pretty sizable, do you remember how much it was?
I mean, some of the counties get a lot of money from the state for their projects, I, I don't know which exact one you're talking about.
I just know there was, I mean, it doesn't matter, but there was like one fair that had like a, a building similar to this built into the state budget, and it was like a multimillion dollar project that it was going to, it seems like it was going to go through, so.
Yeah, so several years ago, we did get the money built into the state budget, but I think that was the two hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay.
And then we got the grant for the five hundred, but the grant has stipulations and we have to meet those or else we have to get the money back.
Okay.
So, um, so yeah, we're, um, we're trying to, you know, multitask with building a poultry barn and an auction barn and then looking at building a multipurpose building, so hopefully now that those two projects are almost complete, we can refocus onto the multipurpose building and see if this is something we want to move forward with.
Okay, so then other than the grants, like the seven hundred and fifty thousand you have in grants, what other monies do you have set aside for that project?
So we do not have.
Nothing.
We don't have the money for the multipurpose building.
No, I understand that, but, but do you have any money set aside for it?
Well, so, we have our capital improvements money.
Yeah.
That we, you know, obviously depending on how our fair goes, we use the capital improvements to build new buildings and projects around the fairgrounds, like the renovations, um, but we also have the foundation, which we have money in, but it's not earmarked solely for the multipurpose building.
Okay. But the foundation is supportive of this building?
I would say yes.
Do you have a, a specific ask in mind with commissioners?
At this time, no. I just wanted you guys to understand where we were in the process, because the last time when you came to the, um, the commissioners came to the fairgrounds, we had it sitting at Virgin Hall Two, and we had changed our plans, so I just wanted to make sure everyone knew where we were, so.
And every year about this time, you give us, come in and give us an update.
Right. So hopefully I can come back in in a couple months and maybe have, have some more solid plans, but.
Pray for sunshine.
Yeah. Five days. You need five really good days of flavor.
At least one day of crazy rain. It feels like in every fair, there's like some sort of chaotic weather event one day.
I know, it takes us five days before.
That's true, that's probably worse, right?
Put all the cameras in, with the tractor, just have it parked out by the road.
We're still, we're still welcome to come in and have our regular meetings on Thursday at the fair.
Thursday at ten AM. I don't think I'll be there, but, um.
He won't be there.
The President will be there. Uh, that's the media day, so we're, we're taking New Day Cleveland and, uh, Fox, Fox Eight and Channel Nineteen both come that day. So I get to do the media coverage, so.
Bring our commissioners meeting, I'll be visiting people across the greater Cleveland area.
Right. So any other questions for us?
No, I'm good. Two hundred and third county fair.
Two hundred and third, all right.
Thank you for your continued support.
Yeah, absolutely, thanks for coming in today. So the one thing I'm thinking about, I don't know if you've thought about, is we just put that elevator in the extension building. What are you going to do with those units? All right, well, yeah, if they're.
I think maybe you should take a tour with, uh, maybe Glenn and Lynn.
That's on my list, yeah, I'm going to have the next few, okay, because I, I'm just concerned if we're putting improvements into that building and the ultimate plan is to level it, that doesn't really sit well with me.
Me either.
Okay. Do we need to make a motion to move our meeting for the fair?
We will do.
Okay, so that's.
By resolution.
Got it, got it, got it, okay.
Me either.
Okay. Do we need to make a motion to move our meeting for the fair?
We will do.
Okay, so that's.
We have to make a resolution.
Got it, got it, got it. Okay.
Okay, I'll read the last item. Number 16, the Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board grant permission to advertise for bids for furniture contractor Geogga County Courthouse Expansion Project to be held on Wednesday, July 23rd, 2025 at 2:00 PM. Notice of this bid opening will be advertised on June 27th, 2025, July 4th, 2025, and on the county website.
Do we know, what's the estimate for the cost of this furniture?
I can have Lynn speak to that.
What happened was last fall, a decision was made to get quotes for the furniture and have it supplied to us under state bid contracts.
Yeah.
But when it came time to actually make the purchase, the prosecutor was not comfortable with that approach and is requiring us now to go out to bid. The quote that we had, that we had accepted was about $600,000. And we don't know what it will be after we go through a bid process.
Okay.
They do have the, the estimate in here of 500,000, $60,000.
How did I miss that? Sorry.
$10,000.
Oh, okay, thank you. Are we, are we reusing some furniture from the existing courthouse?
Very little.
Very little?
A few things, yes. Some jury tables and I think a couple of executive desks, maybe.
Okay, yeah, because the judges have nice, like Amish-made. I know some of the, the judges have like Amish-made furniture.
Yes. There's a discussion about that. Some of them are going over to the new, new areas, some are not.
Okay. And then my other question was, I mean, furniture, you know, there could be things that are similar that would work, right? So when people are bidding this, it has to be a certain make and model of a chair or how does this work?
Specifics were created by the architect, so they will have to meet the specifications, whatever those are.
All right, so can you, can they like propose alternatives that are lower cost or if there's availability concerns?
I guess we'll see when we see the bids come in at.
All right.
Provided they meet the specifications.
Oh, okay. My other question, I didn't notice this at first, but how are we advertising on July 4th? Is that a dumb question?
It's the end news herald, not make-believe.
Okay.
So the paper always tells us on.
They'll have a 4th of July pick.
Yes, they will.
Got it. So I'll make a motion to approve item number 16.
Second.
Mr. Murphy?
Hey, Mr. Murphy.
Yes. I have nothing for oral discussion.
No, do I?
I don't think I do either. Sure.
You're good?
Yeah, I'm good. Just for, to, when we did furniture for this building, there was questions that came in after the meeting. That was how to do, like, there's a pre-bid meeting. There were some questions that came in about alternate items.
Okay, good.
And then they issued an addendum.
Okay.
That allowed them, but I did see on here that she did include that the alternates, that they can provide a second line item cost on a bid sheet.
Okay.
All alternate that are listed. So that would be like.
Because that's what I'm thinking. There's, there'd be like a lot of, you know, where it has to be this type of stool. And they're like, well, you could also do this one and it costs 500 or less. I just want to make sure there's some wiggle rooms, but I'm using all this work, so.
The specifications.
Okay.
And it's similar to like the one we had with this building where it was a layout of the floor.
Right.
And then each room had specifics that were listed in here.
I see.
By quarter responding number to that.
They only, only do so much with everybody's office. It's either a right or a left where the computer should be or this should be, or that should be. So, you know, it's a, it's a detailed print, you know?
Yeah.
And the sizes that's needed for everybody's desk. Okay, so that, we're done with item 17, board discussion. We'll move into public comment.
Howard Southcross of Village. The flying at Geogga County Airport was wonderful last Saturday. It was well-attended. Many Amish were there. Many of the aircraft were there and the, the EAA people and, and the, the Board of the Airport did a wonderful job. There'll be another program, I think, in August or September, and I'm sure it'll be as well-attended as, as it was last Saturday. It's nice to see that Geogga County can stand up and be represented by people like the people at the Board at, at the airport. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Anastasia Nicholas, Chagrin Valley Times. So you talked about the bad state of that building. So how was it able to get to that point? Or is that a problem that it got to that point?
Bad state of what? Which building?
When Carolyn Brinkie was talking about the leaning, if the bridge is leaning out the bridge.
The annex?
Yeah.
The annex building, okay. Because we have plenty of buildings, we have lots of buildings.
So one issue today.
So I, I think in a matter of time, especially with that parapet wall, it was just, put on the back burner, put on the back burner, put on the back burner. But I think going forward, we're going to make everything, safety and health for our employees that are in every building in Geogga County. Any other questions? Or comments? Okay, with, with, with silence in the room, I'll just make a motion.